Get started for the meeting and agenda tonight if everybody could go ahead and stand and we'll do the prayer and the pleas of allegiance to the flag.
Are we going for Keisha? No, she said no.
Heavenly Father, we, as always, we thank you for this day. We thank you for your grace, your mercy, your love, your provision, and all of your blessings upon all of us here in Talbot County throughout the state of Maryland, throughout our wonderful country. Father, as we re-proclaim Talbot Day today, may it be pleasing to you, may it do your will, and may you bless us with a beautiful day coming up on April 25th to celebrate and honor all things Talbot County. In Jesus' most precious and only name we pray, amen.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's get started on the agenda tonight. I appreciate you guys being here tonight. The agenda is before us. Is there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda?
Pete on the line.
Yep, Pete. Okay. Hearing none. The chair moves that the agenda be accepted as unanimous consent. The minutes are before us on March 11th. Is there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the minutes? Okay. Hearing none. The chair moves that the minutes be accepted as unanimous consent. And by the way, Mr. Lesher is on the phone. He's away, but Pete, can you hear us okay?
Yes, I'm right here.
Okay. Delay. Okay. Okay, the dispersments of April 1st and April 8th are before us and we've taken a look at them. Is there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the minutes? Or the dispersments, I'm sorry. Okay, hearing none, the chair moves that the dispersments be accepted as unanimous consent. Okay, we'll go ahead and get started on the proclamation for Talbot Day. Madam Secretary, you want to go ahead and read that into the record, please?
Proclamation, April 25th, 2025, Talbot Day. Whereas Talbot County, Maryland is a county with over 600 miles of beautiful shoreline and is rooted in rich history, culture, and tradition. And whereas Talbot County is comprised of the five municipalities of Easton, Oxford, Queen Anne, St. Michael's, and Trap, along with numerous unincorporated towns and villages, including Barnac, Bellevue, Bosman, Bruceville, Claiborne, Copperville, Cordova, Fairbank, Ivy Town, Longwoods, McDaniel, Nevet, Newcombe, Royal Oak, Sherwood, Skipton, Tillman, Tunis Mills, Unionville, Williamsburg, Whitman, and Y Mills. And whereas Talbot County citizens are fortunate for the many years of peace and prosperity given to us by God Almighty. And whereas on April 19th, 1983, the County Council of Talbot County unanimously approved a proclamation declaring April 25th to be the official birthday of Talbot County and urged its citizens to recognize and commemorate this day in an appropriate manner. And whereas the County Council is desirous of recognizing and commemorating the county's official birthday on August 25th, 2025, as Talbot Day, a celebration dedicated to all. And whereas this year's celebration themed Talbot Through Time invites citizens of all ages to explore the county's past, present, and future through a variety of engaging activities, including the passport challenge, time traveler trivia, citizen and service awards, and the Talbot Day poster contest. And whereas the celebration will culminate in a community event held at 5:00 PM on Friday, April 25th, 2025, on the Talbot County Courthouse lawn, bringing together residents and visitors to honor Talbot's heritage and its shared future in a spirit of unity and pride. And whereas to enshrine unity into the fabric of our community, to give thanks for the many blessings bestowed upon us, and to celebrate the county's beauty, diversity, and enduring legacy, we, the Talbot County Council, encourage our community leaders, our school community, our arts community, our faith community, our historical community, our business community, and all Talbot County citizens to recognize and commemorate the county's birthday on April 25th, 2025, in a manner they deem meaningful and appropriate. Given under our hands and the great seal of Talbot County, Maryland, this 8th day of April in the year of our Lord, 2025.
Okay, Madam Secretary, thank you. Good job. Is there a motion?
So indeed.
Okay, there's a motion second to approve. And Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hay?
Aye.
Okay, that's great. Sarah, you want to come up here for a second? Yep. So would you like to go ahead and introduce yourself and tell everybody that you're, you know, Ms. Talbot? Okay, at this point, okay?
If only. So my name is Sarah Kilman and I'm the communications coordinator for Talbot County. And a couple of years ago, the council designated, officially redesigned the birthday as April 25th. That was originally done back in the 80s and we're excited that we were able to redesignate. And now we are hosting a celebration. We celebrate all month, all April. There's stuff going on all April, including the Business Summit Awards, which is next week, I think, yeah. And then all the things that were mentioned in the proclamation. There is a passport challenge that is really fun. If you complete some items, it's only five items. I promise it's not hard. You can get a really cool prize. And the prize is a secret. No one knows what it is, so it's very exciting. There's also trivia online. And then it all culminates with our wonderful celebration on April 25th at 5:00 PM on the courthouse lawn, weather permitting. If it rains, we will be at the library. If you would like more information about everything that we're doing to celebrate Talbot this month, you can go to talbotcountymd.gov/TalbotDay and you'll find all of the information right there.
Okay, that's great. Counsel, any other questions or?
No, just excited for another fabulous year and look forward to the citizens award and the poster as well.
Appreciate all the work you're doing getting up to this point, so I know it's going to be fabulous. I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll add, if I could just say, just Sarah, thank you for all the work you put into this. It's, you know, I see your warboard back there with everything on it and all that you're doing and it's most certainly appreciated. You're doing a wonderful job, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, Pete. Pete, do you want to say anything?
I'll let this go. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Okay, all right, next.
So we got a proclamation.
Oh, that's right.
So we got to do that. So being that this is Talbot Day and we're celebrating everyone, so anyone who'd like to come on up and join us for a picture, everyone that's here, please come on up and join us.
Yep.
Please don't be shy.
You can take center stage if you want. You can take center stage if you want.
It happens.
All the time.
All the time.
Connor, you got your wild ones?
Yes.
What's that mean? What do you say?
Are you ready? All right. I'm going to take many. A few more. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys. There we go, Talbot Day. Okay, next on the agenda is a proclamation for National Public Safety Telecommunicator Week. So you guys want to come on up? Madam Secretary, you want to go ahead and read that into the record, please?
National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, April 13th through the 19th, 2025. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require law enforcement, fire, emergency medical services response. And whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of law enforcement officers, firefighters, and emergency medical personnel is critical to the protection of life, the preservation of property, and the safety of our emergency services personnel, and is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who communicate with the Talbot County 911 Operations Center. And whereas public safety telecommunications are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services and serve as a single vital link to emergency services personnel by monitoring their activities, by radio, and providing them with information to help ensure their safety and the safety of those to whom they are responding. And whereas public safety telecommunications of the Talbot County 911 Operations Center substantially contribute to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients by exhibiting compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their duties. Now therefore, we, the County Council of Talbot County, do hereby proclaim the week of April 13th through the 19th, 2025, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Talbot County in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our county and its citizens safe. Given under our hands and the great seal of Talbot County this 8th day of April in the year of our Lord, 2025.
Okay, thank you, Madam Secretary. How you doing, Brian and Holly? How are you guys doing?
Hi.
Good evening. Thank you for having us.
Good, good.
And thank you for taking the time to recognize the very dedicated men and women of our 911 Center. So on a daily basis, these folks are answering calls from our community and every, most of them are in crisis, even if they, some are more in crisis than others, but so we always have a hard time, you know, making those decisions of triaging and sending the appropriate resources. These guys make it look very easy on a daily basis and do a great job at it. So thank you for taking the time to recognize them.
Well, I'm sure. Counsel?
Well, Brian, we thank you for all the hard work that you and your staff does and it's a pleasure to recognize you for this month.
Talbot County is so fortunate and grateful for having the services and all that you do.
Thank you. I just want to reemphasize that point that you just made a few minutes ago, Brian. I mean, when folks are calling, I mean, it's probably one of the worst days of their lives. And Holly and team, how you all handle that and help folks through that moment in their life, which is, again, not their, you know, not their best moment sometimes, is very admirable. I can't thank you guys enough for what you do. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Lesher, you want to say a few things?
Thank you. Appreciate their work. Yeah, I've had occasion to be in the 911 call center a couple of times. Thankfully, none of those were exciting times. But I know how much they do and how good they are, particularly when the call volume gets up. Thanks for all you do.
Thank you.
Mr. Stamp, I know you want to say something.
Well, thank you, Mr. Counsel President. I mean, emergency services is near and dear to my heart with my background. And I'm very proud of this group here, especially, you know, we can send all the fire trucks or ambulances or police calls to somebody's emergency, but if it doesn't get through that room, it doesn't happen. And it's easy to be desensitized to the importance of the work that they do, even by them. But the truth is, as Mr. Step said, oftentimes when people call 911, it's their experience, their worst day they've ever had. And they're usually very emotional. And these individuals sit in that room and they're able to navigate them through those emotions to get critical information to them that oftentimes saves lives, whether it's stopping bleeding or initiating CPR or whatever it may be while emergency resources are on the way. So I get real excited when I see the light shine for a moment on our 911 telecommunications because the work they do is absolutely amazing. So thank you for letting me say a few words.
Thank you. Like my colleague said, I can't thank you guys enough in with what you do every day, day in, and it's 24/7. And that's what a lot of people, you just can't comprehend your, every day, there is no holiday. And we really appreciate that. And not only that, appreciate the husbands and wives too, to deal with, you know, day in and day out. The other thing we're proud of is giving you another 911 center too. So Brian, could you just touch base just a hair bit on that for the public to know that what we're doing?
Sure, be happy to. So we are currently still operating out of our Port Street facility and we are in the process of building out a new 911 center at Mary's Court at the new Talbot County Public Safety Complex. The 911 furniture was just built, which is very exciting. Then later on in this meeting, we're going to be asking for some more technology to be able to complete that project. Then we're just looking forward to getting all that put in and transition our folks over. Once that occurs, we're going to still retain the Port Street facility as a live backup center. So not a lot of rural jurisdictions are afforded that opportunity, but that'd be really good for us. If we have something disastrous happen at our primary center, we can immediately go to our backup center and pick up right where we left off and make sure that there's no lab and coverage to our citizens. So this will be very exciting times for us.
Well, you've done a good job coordinating that and setting that, all that stuff up, so we really appreciate it. So come on up.
And I would like to introduce, we did bring two other.
Yep, sure.
So Lieutenant Heather Jones.
Okay.
And Communication Specialist Joshua Willis is here with us to also help celebrate.
That's great. That's great. Yep, everybody, Holly loves hugs too, so go ahead and hug her.
That's the only reason she came.
Yep. Okay, next on the agenda is a presentation, a certificate for Talbot Work Business Academy graduates. Cassandra, how are you?
I asked.
Good, how are you? Good, good.
Good. Well, good evening, council members. I'm Cassandra Van Hooser. I'm the Director of Economic Development and Tourism for Talbot County and I brought lots of friends with me tonight.
I see that.
Mr. Holmes is supposed to be with us, but he sends his regards. He is stuck on the bridge.
Uh-oh.
So he is on his way, but he'll be here later. So I brought other friends to speak to. So it's a real honor to be here tonight to share a few words about the Talbot Works Business Academy, a program that is helping shape the future of small business right here in the community. First and foremost, I want to extend our heartfelt thanks to you. Your steadfast support, both in words of encouragement and in your financial commitment through grants from your allocation of the American Rescue Plan Act funds has made this program possible. Your investment sends a strong message that Talbot County believes in its entrepreneurs and is willing to back that belief with action. We're grateful for your partnership and your vision for a thriving local economy. Also want to recognize and thank Scott Warner and the Mitchell Regional Council, whose support has been absolutely vital. Through the Rural Maryland Prosperity Investment Fund, the Mitchell Regional Council provided the financial resources for this cohort, for the programming. And we were able to launch and sustain this initiative because we received funding through the Maryland Rural Economic Development Fund for our first two cohorts. Their commitment to economic development across the region has opened the door for many individuals to turn ambition into action and ideas into enterprise. Most importantly, I want to take a moment to celebrate our graduates, many of whom are with us here tonight. Each one of them brought something unique to this program. It's different backgrounds, different business ideas, but all of them started with one essential trait, courage. In today's world, becoming an entrepreneur is no small decision. It takes guts to step out on your own, to embrace risk, and to believe in your vision enough to pursue that in the face of uncertainty. These individuals rose to the challenge. They showed up, leaned in, asked questions, solved problems, and supported each other. Their commitment and enthusiasm is truly nothing short of inspiring. So I've asked a couple of the potential graduates, you're going to graduate them, to say a few words about what the program meant to them. And I'm going to start with Jen Wagner of Jen Wagner Mosaic. She's a well-known mosaic artist around here, so most of you probably know her. So Jen?
Hi, I'm happy to be here. So I'm a little bit of an oddity to this program. I just celebrated 21 years of business, but I had never taken any formal classes. And talking to Cassandra, you know, she gave me a great statistic. I think you said there's over 4,000 of us here in Talbot County.
Employer establishments, that's right.
So I graduated in 1996 and I will tell you that over half of the kids that I graduated with are entrepreneurs. It is a brave move, but I also think it's who we are here on the eastern shore. It's part of like our independent spirit. I just thought, sure, I'll try it. I'm at a pivotal point in my career. I've experienced a lot of success, but I'm ready to take it to the next level. And someone said, you should see if there's room in this class. So I thought, okay, I'll do it. It's a big time commitment. I'm super busy, but let's take it on. It completely changed my life. It completely changed my life. I needed someone, I needed people that I could trust to look at things with a fresh pair of eyes. The mentorships were the most important things to me, to be able to talk to experts, uh, from legal, from accounting. Will was amazing. I understood that I could actually bug Cassandra some more, so that was probably a double-edged sword for her. But that gave me the ability to really dissect everything, and I'm on a really great track, and I feel really good about it, and it's all this class. So I just want to thank you guys so much for supporting a program like this that is so relevant to our specific area. Everywhere nears needs courses like this, but when I look around me, almost all of my peers are self-employed. And they kind of rolled it into it the same way I did. I found something that I loved, and I just went for it. Um, and that's great, but providing this kind of education, this kind of training, it's not just good for the individuals. It creates a ripple effect in the community. Um, they're able to run their businesses better and be more secure, and then also maybe reach out and help other people. So thank you for your time.
That's great.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Nolan Laguna of Laguna Flooring is also going to say a few words. Nolan, welcome.
Thank you. Hello. I'm Nolan. I own Laguna Floor Care. This program has meant quite a bit to me. Um, I've been in business for about four years. I'm a father of four, um, and this was a great experience, full of knowledge. My kids had an opportunity to not only participate with me in this program, but they had an opportunity to watch me grow in this program. So they got that business aspect of it, and I'm very appreciative, um, of the resources you guys provided and, um, the continued support, even after the class is done. I feel like I still have an immense amount of support from you guys. And so I just wanted to take this time to say thank you to Cassandra Van Hooser, Will Holmes, to Talbot County Council, and to my cohorts. I appreciate it.
Thank you, we appreciate you.
So I think it's so important that you hear, uh, what it means to our cohort. And I'll tell you, uh, I'm expecting great things from them, and here's how I know. We have the successes of our past cohorts to judge it by. So here's what your investment is doing for Talbot County. I'm working on a complete report for you, but just a brief glance at the numbers shows that those who participated in the program have already hired eleven new employees. Three businesses have expanded by opening another location. And not to give away any secrets, but at least two participants have launched a second business. So here in Talbot County, we know that small businesses are the heartbeat of our local economy. They create jobs, bring innovation, and build the character of our towns and communities. That's why we remain committed to supporting our local entrepreneurs. And again, I just want to say thank you and ask you to graduate, uh, this class.
That sounds great. Okay, um, at this time, do we want to go ahead and, uh, call the names and have people come up?
Yeah, I think that's what we're going to do next, right, Cassandra?
Yep.
Yes, okay. So at this time, we're going to graduate the class by giving them their completion, um, certificate for completing the Talbot, uh, Works Business Academy. All right?
That sounds good. So when you call your name, come on up.
First up is Amanda Cook.
Amanda Cook?
Anne Casamento. DeMora Monday. Jair Deveros. Jeffrey Mathias. Jen Wagner. You guys got to go hook up, uh, what's up eastern shore where Jen was one of the mover and shakers under forty.
We were under forty.
Joanna Duke. Dr. Kristin Lisette. Lamont Powell. Maria Bowser. Monika Maraz. Nolan Laguna. Olamide Ajunima. Pamela Lindberg. And Michelle Hain. White the class, congratulations. All right, Pakarazi, look at me. Okay.
Okay, well, go ahead and, um, we're, uh, we're getting ready to have an update with the Police Accountability Board. If you guys want to make your way on up here. How you doing? Good, good. We want to, we want to go ahead and welcome you, and at this time with, with updates and stuff, we got a clock up here, okay? So give you around ten minutes or so, okay?
Yes, sir.
Yep.
So my name is Mitch Ettinger. You all appointed me as Chair of the Police Accountability Board about two and a half years ago. And we've, uh, we finished our second full year in two thousand twenty-four, and we're beginning our third year.
Okay.
So, um, we asked to come before the council, and some of my members are with me today, um, in the, in the audience. Bill Belding, um, Brian Naranyo, Connie Webster, Mr. Gilbert, John Gilbert. They're all here because we want some feedback, and maybe we won't get it tonight, but something for you to think about. The Police Accountability Board was established by the Maryland Legislature, as you all know, with a very, very, uh, narrow scope. So each county was to have a Police Accountability Board that on a quarterly basis would meet, review outcomes of disciplinary matters considered by the Administrative Charging Committee, which I chair for the county, um, and then submit an annual report each year talking about the, the discipline and the trends in discipline, uh, that we are seeing in the accounting. So we meet quarterly with each member of the law enforcement, each, each agency. So the Sheriff's Office, St. Michael's, Oxford, right, and East and P D. And they send representatives each quarter, and we meet right here, um, which is open to the public. The P A B took on itself to basically, um, address issues associated with disciplinary actions, which is the principal mandate. But also, we, we review every quarter all use of force reports. So anytime there's a hands-on situation by a police officer, the P A B reviews it. We look at arrest data. We look at criminal activity trends and, and, and analysis from the, each of the chiefs of police. Um, we look for possible training opportunities for the members of the A C C as well as the P A B, where we like to attend training with the police officers. And we've urged, and many of our members have done on the ride-along program as well. So we have, many of us have gone with the Sheriff's Office and Eastern Police Department. We also look at community relations activities and what each of the, um, law enforcement agencies are doing in that regard. And then we always have an, an agenda item where we said at the law enforcement agencies, how, how can we help you? What is of interest to you and what can we do to make your job easier? Um, and I would say that the quarterly meetings are engaging. Um, I don't think we've had a, the presence of a council member. You're always welcome to come. Um, and we, we, we do get into some meeting issues with the law enforcement agencies, but it's a good back and forth. The, um, the A C C, I want to report on that briefly. The A C C, the Administrative Charging Committee, sits under the P A B, and I chair that with other members. There's a total of five members, and we review each and every citizen complaint involving a police officer. The law enforcement agency themselves does the investigation. They submit the investigative file to the Administrative Charging Committee, and it is that committee that determines whether the investigation is adequate and whether the, the, uh, police officer will be administratively charged, and if so, what discipline to impose. That is binding on the, the law enforcement agencies. It's not binding on the police officer, the law enforcement officer involved. They can demand a trial board and take it to the next level. So in the first year, two thousand twenty-three, we reviewed fifteen complaints of police misconduct. Twelve were deemed to be unfounded by the A C C, and three resulted in administrative charges with dispositions ranging from a letter of reprimand to two days' loss of pay, and there were no trial board requests. Meaning that the three cases where we imposed discipline, the police officers accepted the discipline, and that was the end of the case. Interestingly, all fifteen complaints came through the L A As, meaning that none came to the P A B directly. None, and none came to the A C C directly, which is, I think, is, is a topic for discussion at some point by the council because I'm not sure that the, the citizens of the county understand the process and that we, we have properly, um, made that public.
I see.
Last year, there were only six complaints of misconduct, which is really a testament to the fantastic law enforcement agencies we have. There are thousands of interactions every year between police officers and citizens, and I mean literally, it's in our report, thousands. We had six, we, six complaints total. Four were deemed to be unfounded, and two complaints resulted in administrative charges, with dispositions in one case of termination of the police officer and five days' loss of pay in the other. The trial board, and you might know the case, the trial board was requested by, by the one officer who was terminated, and that case became moot when the officer was convicted at a trial, a criminal, criminal trial. Again, all six complaints fielded in two thousand twenty-four came through the law enforcement agencies. None came through the P A B, as the legislature anticipated, and none came through the A C C directly. To date, the A C C in two thousand twenty-five has already received seven complaints of misconduct. All right, so that brings us to, why, why are we here? What, what do the P A B members really want from the council? And that's, we want to ensure that we are fulfilling not only the legislative mandate, but that we're doing so consistent with your expectations as the county council. You appointed us. You know, we work for the county. We are county employees, right? Our mandate is narrow by statute, but we have seen in other jurisdictions, um, P A Bs go well beyond that mandate at the direction of their council, including to review policies of law enforcement agencies and the like. We, we have not done that. In fact, if you look at our agenda items, um, consistently quarter to quarter, it, it, they are fairly static. We look at use of force, as I explained, and we engage on issues that are affecting the community. That's really all we have done, and, and to be honest with you, the P A B feels that its role is not all that substantive. Once the A C C does its work, we report, I report to the P A B members, and it's over. And the P A B wants to ensure that what we're doing, what we submit to you annually is what you want just, what you want to see from us. And, um, and that, that's really it. So we really would like some feedback. We've made a couple of recommendations in our annual report. I think the first year, those, those recommendations were off. They, they were off a little bit because, um, they were outside our mandate. And I, and I, and I was not surprised that we didn't hear back from you on that one. But this last year, we, we did raise the issue of, are the citizens of the county aware of the complaint process? And are, and are they given enough avenues through which to file their complaints if they want to?
Right, right.
Lastly, I just, I want to say that, look, we, we, the A C C is a tou- it's a tough job. It's a tough job in that we as laypeople are reviewing the actions of police officers that are many times in emergency situations or highly emotional situations or charge situations.
Right.
And we're doing it with a hindsight review with no emotion, right? And we, we, we endeavor mightily to do it right. And I think, I think, you know, we have some, we always have some turbulence, you know, with some of our decisions, but for the most part, I think that we're, we're making progress with the L A As and that they trust us to review the complaints and to issue decisions that are not only substantive, but are, are thought, really thoughtful, considering the police officer's actions and the citizens' rights. So that's why I was here tonight, and I know I have just a couple of minutes left on the, the timer there. So my, my question really is to you is, is there any other information you want from us? And is there anything that you want us to be doing that we're not doing?
Pete, you, you, um, do you have any, you have any thoughts on, on that?
Service, you're, you're S U B?
Yes, yeah, go ahead, Pete, yep.
Yeah, uh, well, first of all, I want to thank the, the Police Accountability Board for, uh, for the report and for the recommendations. I appreciate the work that you've accomplished to build a respectful relationship with law enforcement agencies and to, uh, to, to gain the public trust. I appreciate that you are, you're concerned about, perhaps, the word, the word not getting out. And I wonder what we, what we might do further to that. Clearly, it's, it's not, uh, well, you, you, the evidence you present suggests that, that, uh, that there's low, a low degree of awareness of it. And I would, I would appreciate a further conversation to figure out what more we can do to support that. I want to compliment you on both the tone and the thoroughness of the report. And in terms of, of the scope, I'm, I'm not prepared at this point with the information that I have to, uh, to recommend, uh, an expansion of that scope. But, uh, but again, I, I'd be, I'd be willing to look at, uh, at other models and see what might be working in other jurisdictions if there are, if there are particular recommendations that the Police Accountability Board might have. And I, I, I'll put one further note here, which is I appreciate the, uh, the approach of, uh, treating opportunities with the police that might be appropriate to members of the Police Accountability Board. You mentioned that in the report as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank, thank you, Pete. Counsel, any, any other?
Yeah, uh, first and foremost, I just want to thank the Police Accountability Board for all the work that you've done so far. And the reports are very helpful, extremely helpful. Um, but I just echo what Councilman Lasher stated. You know, how can we increase the awareness of the citizens to make them aware? You know, how can we increase the awareness of the citizens to make them aware of the process? And then second, what are other areas doing as it relates to the scope of work for their P A B? So those would be the two areas that, you know, I would want to get, you know, more information on or try to do some research as it relates to that. Because you did mention, I believe, other areas had their P A B board review policy of law enforcement, so that may be something. But certainly seeing what the scope of work is for other jurisdictions would be most helpful for us, so then we can go from there. But thank you so much for coming in tonight. It's, it's very informative, and I appreciate you and other members taking time and serving as well.
Yes, your report's been very illuminating, and it's quite clear that both the board and the committee work, walk a tightrope. And you seem to be doing it very well. And I concur with my, my comrades here that it would be interesting to know some more information and see how we can assist you with some of the issues that you've just touched on. Thank you for all you do.
Yep, thank you. Appreciate that.
And I appreciate the update. No real feedback outside of just, you know, you know, just, just keep doing what you guys are doing. I see no need, no reason to expand the, you know, the scope or functionality than, other than what's required by law. I think we have a, you know, a very good community here where, you know, our, our law enforcement professionals are, you know, one is elected, right? And is entrusted to make those decisions already by, 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 by the public. So I see no real need to expand it, but, yeah, that's about it.
And like my colleague said, we really appreciate you chairing this because it's, it's a, it's a big deal, and it's mandated, and it's a lot of pressure on you sometimes when you have to, you and your colleagues have to, um, committee, have to decide on that stuff. So I want to thank you guys out there for, for serving on, on this committee. And like you said, we can build off of what you've told us. And we really appreciate you coming in here to us. And it means a lot to us, so, but we'll give you some good feedback, okay?
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Next, up to date is the Maryland Environmental Service. How you guys doing?
Good, good evening, counsel.
Okay, good, good, good. How you doing?
I'm doing good.
Good, good, I'm great, I'm great. So I got a little friend up here called The Clock.
I'm a murderer.
Okay, okay, okay.
I saw a crowd here, and you know I do love an audience.
I know you do, I know you do.
So, good evening, Council President Callahan and your fellow council members. I am Tim Ford. I'm the Managing Director for Environmental Operations for the Maryland Environmental Service. For those who don't know, we are an independent state agency, and we own and operate the four county landfill, of which Talbot County is a participating member. And we also operate a transfer station on behalf of the county here in Easton. So we want to talk to you a little bit about the operations and update on the operations themselves. And then it is budget time, and we are in the middle of developing our F Y twenty-six budget. We have already discussed it in brief with the administrators of the four counties in our last meeting, and we'll talk about it a bit here. I know there are some questions from the county on some of those rates, so we want to address that as well. So as I said, Midshore One is the, the start of this eighty-year partnership, or actually a hundred-year partnership now, with the four counties. And it closed in two thousand and ten. We currently manage the post-closure of that landfill. And then again, as I said, we manage the homeowner drop-off for the county and the transfer station that's there. We even have some graphics for you there. All right, Gary, you can go ahead with the numbers, because that's Gary's forte. And you can introduce yourself, Gary.
Gary Laseco, Senior Project Manager with M E S, also a Talbot County resident. So Midshore One Transfer Station, the past several years, we've, we've taken in roughly the same amount of trash at the transfer station there, which is about forty thousand tons per year. And this table here really depicts the, the last twelve months or rolling twelve months up through the end of March. And as you can see, we're at about forty thousand tons of trash, four thousand tons of brush. Those are right on par with the budgeted values for this fiscal year. And then you can see, just from the Scale House transactions, that it's, it's a pretty busy facility. It's thirty-six thousand transactions there, you know, on an annualized period. And as I alluded to, this, this, this graph just depicts our tonnages over the past several fiscal years. You can see there's a slight upward trend since F Y twenty-eighteen. F Y twenty-four, we were a little bit over forty thousand tons of trash. And F Y twenty-five, we're projecting to be right at that forty thousand ton level. F Y twenty-six, with some of the new communities that are coming online in the county or being built now, such as Matthewstown Run, we expect our tonnage to go up just a little bit.
You sure see the effect of COVID in twenty-twenty-one. Everybody cleaned their garage out. What's up? That's true.
And here's some more numbers, just for, just for your benefit. Like the transfer station, the homeowner drop-off facility there at Midshore One is a very busy place. We had roughly twenty-five thousand visits over the last twelve months and took in little over a thousand tons of waste. Again, that's, uh, that operation is funded in part by the sale of punch cards. So we sell you a punch card, you come in, you, you get a punch, and you can deposit seven bags of trash or brush there with that punch. All right, and moving on to Midshore Two, that's the landfill over in Ridgely, where all the trash and other waste that's collected at Midshore One eventually ends up. This graph is a little bit busy, but it really shows the last four fiscal years on a monthly basis of our, our trash taken in there. And the red bars there represent the current fiscal year, F Y twenty-five. We started out very well, significantly over budget in terms of waste acceptance there. However, January, February, some of the weather that came in, we lost a lot of the construction and demolition debris. So tonnage has been down the last couple of months. With the exception of March, we did see a, a healthy rebound there with some of that waste coming back. And again, we have some of the waste that's being generated at the Black and, the Black and Decker Building, as well as the silos in Easton, that's ending up at these facilities. Also, Midshore Two, just in the past few months, we have, let me back up, we first piloted a, a new compactor, trash compactor, at the landfill. So really, the, the goal of any landfill operation is to maximize the airspace, to put as much waste in a unit of airspace, so that we can prolong the life there without having to move somewhere else and just operate generally more efficiently. So we piloted a new compactor there last fall. It's a, it's a Tana, is the manufacturer, or Swedish-based company. And we found that the compaction rate that we were getting with that machine because of its design was between fifteen and twenty percent more efficient. So we went ahead and purchased a Tana and have implemented that here beginning in February. And again, have seen the same thing, you know, post-pilot period. Significantly improved compaction, we're using a lot less soil that lowers our costs. Fuel usage is also down. And an added benefit, and probably the most important benefit in a landfill operation, is safety. This machine, where the cab is mounted, it creates a lot more visibility. And if any of you have been to the landfill or even the transfer station, you know that it's not only a busy place, but we have customers who aren't familiar with it zooming in and out frequently. So it's important that we have good visibility, good communication, and this machine provides us a little bit better benefit relative to the machine that we did have.
This is, I was debating on whether I should have thrown this one to Gary, since it's a price increase, but I'll, I'll take it. We are proposing for F Y twenty-six, an increase in our tipping fee for trash to seventy-one fifty, it's a dollar fifty increase, forty-six fifty for, per ton for, for brush. And then for sewer sludge, fifteen dollars a ton. So that's, that's where some of the concern is, expressed by our administrators, by the county as well. It's a high number. It would cost this county about thirty thousand dollars a year, roughly. So we are considering other options. Obviously, the first thing we always look at is saving money. Can we save money and, and help recoup some of the cost? I, I didn't explain why. Sludge contains a high concentration, traditionally contains a high concentration of PFOS. There are new regulations in effect that require very expensive monitoring, so we have to pass that cost along somewhere. And since sludge tends to be higher in PFOS and other materials, that we, we looked at that first. But we are entertaining suggestions and comments from the, from the counties. Talbot County has suggested that we use a test-out option, where we allow the county to, to basically test out if their PFOS levels are low. And we'll, we'll absolutely consider that. We're also looking, again, at other ways to, to either cut our budget or reduce costs to make up the difference as well. We are very much aware of what things cost. We are competitive. We don't have flow control on the eastern shore. People have a choice when they use our landfills. We have to be competitive, and so we, we work hard at doing that. You've heard that discussion before when we talked about a host fee. So nothing's changed there.
Right.
So that's where we are. We are taking into consideration, we're working with the administrators, and we'll, we'll, at the end of the day, do what's best for all, all four counties. Here, what that means here, since there's an additional surcharge for the transfer operation, would be eighty-one fifty a ton for trash, brush fifty-six fifty. And then homeowner drop-off facilities, five dollars single-use fee is what we're proposing, a ten-dollar punch card, five trip, and twenty-dollar punch card, ten trip. That is entirely in the purview of the county to set those rates, and so we'll, we'll move accordingly as you direct. And Gary can handle this, this coming home. You can bring it home.
So, once again, at the Mid, the Midshore Two landfill, last year, we hosted a regional competition for equipment operators and heavy truck operators. It's called the rodeo. It's, uh, it's put on by the Solid Waste Association of North America and our Mid-Atlantic Chapter. We hosted at Midshore Two last year. It was a great event, great turnout, lots of equipment, lots of trucks. We would encourage the county, if they have any heavy truck operators, to consider putting them in the competition. If you place in the top two there, you go to a national.
Do you want me to run one?
Yeah.
Well, Chuck and I will run one.
It's a fun event, and we, we strongly encourage and invite anybody to come out and see it.
That's good. Okay. Great job, great job, good job. Yeah, very proud of you guys, very proud. Any, any questions from counsel?
No questions, great presentation. Always like very informative.
Yep. Hey, Pete, do you have anything?
Uh, yeah, I, I wanted to ask about the, we just went through, we just went through an exercise with, with Queens County last year that placed a surcharge for that county on the, being able to continue that, extend the life of, of the Region Two landfill. And when we were doing that and, and looking at, we were projecting costs, and I'm wondering how this proposed cost of seventy-one and a half tons squares with, with what we were projecting last year, I don't have those figures fresh in my mind. If you could remind me.
It's what was, what we agreed to on those, when we extended the left.
I got you. Go, go ahead, Clay, you want to say something?
No, I, I just wanted to highlight the positive relationship we have with M E S. And they're incredibly responsive, have been, continue to be, and Ray often is our point, working with him day in and day out. So just wanted to thank him.
Yeah, okay. All right, guys, thank you. Appreciate it. Okay. Okay. Okay, next is presentation of the two thousand twenty-four diversity training report. Donna, how are you?
I'm well, good evening. All right.
Okay.
Good evening.
Yep.
In accordance with the administrative resolution adopted initially on June twenty-third, two thousand twenty, I am here this evening to present the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Report for the year two thousand twenty-four, which I believe you all have copies of. Regarding recruitment, Talbot County continues to focus on recruiting the best qualified candidates for employment. Employment opportunities are posted on the county website as well as at local colleges with the Maryland Association of Counties, the Maryland Municipal League, and the Chesapeake Multicultural Center. We also post our employment opportunities on Indeed dot com, which gives us exposure in sixty markets across twenty-eight languages, as well as on thousands of job boards and career sites. Regarding training, employees completed three online courses through the Cantola Learning System focused on diversity, equity, and inclusion, harassment prevention, and employee conduct. Regarding initiatives, in May of two thousand twenty-four, the council approved a bilingual pay policy. The D E I statement was posted on our, our Employment Opportunities homepage. And when the employee handbook was revised and approved effective May one, twenty-two four, language regarding E E O, A D A, anti-discrimination, anti-harassment, and how an employee would report discrimination was expanded. For two thousand twenty-five, we are continuing training. Right now, we're looking for a new vendor to contract with, and we'll move forward with any other suggestions.
Okay, that's great. Okay, great, great report. Any, any questions from counsel?
No, thank you.
Yep, yep.
Appreciate it.
Okay. All right, well, we appreciate the report. Thanks, good job.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to, to thank Ms. Perdue for the report, which shows nothing that should cause any alarm, but more importantly, for your work in carrying out the intent behind the related policies, to ensure that our county workforce feels that it is being treated respectfully and fairly.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Lester, appreciate that. Okay, thank you, Donna. Okay, next on the agenda is our introduction of administrative resolution. Madam Secretary, could you go ahead and read that, please?
Administrative Resolution of the County Council of Talbot County, the County Council, pursuant to the authority of Bill Number fifteen sixty-three enacted by the County Council on July twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four, the public local law authorizing the execution and delivery of an equipment lease purchase agreement and related instruments between Talbot County, Maryland, as less E, and Motorola Solutions, Inc., as less R, for the purchase of equipment for the county's nine-one-one division and the nine-one-one division computer-aided dispatch system.
Okay, thank you, Madam Secretary. Brian?
Good evening.
Yep.
So this was, this lease that we're requesting is for a nine-one-one center, for them to have access to the radio system. So the same radios that we carry in the field, this is a version for the nine-one-one center, obviously, a lot more robust, a lot more talk groups and things it can do to help us out in the field. So that's really what this lease is all about, it's just for the new nine-one-one center.
Okay, all right. How you doing, Tommy, over there?
In case you ask me any really technical questions, I have Tommy at my side.
We, we definitely need him. So, is there any questions from counsel at this point?
No, we, I recognize this as much-needed equipment, is necessary, very necessary, you know, so, no, no questions.
Yep, okay. Mr. Lester, you got any questions?
No questions.
Okay, 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 at this time, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion and second to go, improve. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Stepp?
Aye.
Mr. Lester?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Haye?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, guys. Okay, appreciate, appreciate, good job. Okay, next on the agenda is the public hearing. Madam Secretary, could you go ahead and read Resolution three seventy-one?
Resolution Number three seventy-one, a resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Resolution Number 371, a resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Border and Sewer Plan by reclassifying and remapping certain real property located at 5536 Public Landing Road, Royal Oak, Maryland, and further described as Tax Map 46, Parcel 46, from unprogrammed to S1, immediate priority status pursuant to an application filed by Talbot County, Maryland.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Secretary.
Ray Clark, county engineer. This, as Resolution 371, is associated to the county expanding the sewer service area for the Bellevue Passage Museum. So ultimately, the building that they had was outside our sewer service area. So we're redoing the maps. So it's now included. Public Works Advisory Board on May 20th reviewed Resolution 371 and ultimately passed a motion recommending the county council adopt the resolution via 5 to 0 vote.
All right. Okay. So at this time, I'll go ahead and open it to the floor. Yeah, sure. Go ahead.
We probably should let the council know that the planning commission also reviewed the application, 371. They found it consistent with the comprehensive.
Okay. Great. Okay. All right, that sounds good. Okay, at this time, I'll go ahead and open it to the floor. Anybody that wants to come up and talk, I'll give them three minutes. And if they're representing an organization, I'll give them five minutes. So here on my left, if anybody wants to come up and talk about 371, please come up. On my right, okay. All right, at this time, I think we're eligible for vote. My right, Madam Secretary. So, okay, at this time, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. So we'll go ahead and make a motion. Is there a motion? So moved.
You can just vote.
I just can vote. Okay. All right, Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes? Aye.
Okay. All right. Next, Madam Secretary, the public hearing, Resolution 372.
Resolution 372, a resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Border and Sewer Plan by reclassifying and remapping two parcels of real property located at 23452 Pine Point Road, Bosman, Maryland, and Pine Point Road, Bosman, Maryland, and further described as Tax Map 31, Parcel 352, Lot 2, and Tax Map 31, Parcel 351, Lot 3, respectively, from unprogrammed to S1, immediate priority status pursuant to an application filed by Christopher F. Daniels and Devon Williams Daniels, trustees under the C and D Daniels Trust, dated May 30th, 2024.
Thank you, council. Again, Ray Clark, county engineer. On March 20th, the Public Works Advisory Board reviewed Resolution 272 and via a four to, with four votes to four and one abstaining.
Hey, Ray, I think you said two. It's 372.
It's 372. I'm sorry, 372.
All right. I just wanted to make sure.
Resolution 370. Yeah, you're correct. I'm sorry, my eyes are going bad.
Yeah, no problem. No, no problem.
The Public Works Advisory Board ultimately passed a motion recommending the council adopt Resolution 372 with four board members voting for it and one abstaining.
Okay.
Counsel, thank you. Bryce Yelton, Talbot County Planning and Zoning. On April 2nd, 2025, the Planning Commission reviewed Resolution 372. Motion was made and seconded to certify that the resolution is consistent with the 2016 Talbot County Comprehensive Plan and the seven relevant standards in accordance with the environmental article of the Maryland Annotated Code. The motion passed with a vote of four to zero.
Okay, then. All right. All right, good job, guys. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. I'll give you three minutes to come up and individual, and five minutes if you're representing somebody. So anybody, yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Callahan.
Yes, how you doing?
William Parker, I represent the Daniels, who are the owners of the two subject properties. Give you a little background.
If you could talk. Could you talk in here? Yeah, thank you.
In 2022, the county approached the Daniels, who are owners of the bed of Pine Point Road, which is a private road, for an easement to run the force main from the waters of Broad Creek as it merged to serve the Bosman Nevoa area. The Daniels cooperated with the county in that regard, thinking incorrectly that the two lots that they own on Pine Point Road would be served by the force main that ran by their properties. So the reason for their request is so that those two properties will be served by the force main. One of the properties is improved with a house that was built in 1987, 1988. And in order to construct that house with the drain field within the hundred-foot critical area buffer, they were required to get a variance from the state health department to penetrate high seasonal groundwater. So ultimately, the system could be at risk for failure and polluting the waters of our county. There are valid reasons to grant this request, and we ask you to do so with regard to both of the properties.
Okay. Thank you.
If you have any other questions.
Okay. Good. Yep.
Yeah, I don't have any questions for him, but I just want to make sure I'm clear. Ray did say that the Public Works Advisory Board approved this request in a five-to-oh vote.
Four to one.
Oh, four to one.
Four to one. It's four.
Zero with one abstain.
Okay. All right. And then Planning Commission as well, did we say?
Unanimous.
Unanimous, five to oh. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else like to come up and talk about 372? All right, okay. At this time, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Madam Secretary, it's ready for vote. Can you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Yes, sir.
Just before we go into this, I asked a question. The Public Works Advisory Board remain concerned, I have, I have no problem with offering S1 to the, to the developed property here. I do have, I do have strong reservations about doing that for the undeveloped property and can't support the, the, the resolution as it's on the table right now.
Okay. Fair enough. All right. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Oh, can I do a follow-up since Pete said that?
Sure, sure.
Were there any reservations according to Planning Commission in regards to the unimproved property at all? They did deem it both properties consistent with the comprehensive plan according to the Maryland law.
Counsel, again, Bryce Yelton, Planning and Zoning. They did discuss it. It was in the map resolution, so it was drawn out on the map that the Planning Commission received. And they did vote five to zero in favor of this, to find it consistent with all of that information.
Both properties?
That's correct.
All right. Thank you so much. All right.
Good. Okay. Dave, you good? Okay. All right. All right. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes? Aye.
Okay. All right. Okay. Next on the agenda is Resolution 373.
Resolution Number 373, a resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Border and Sewer Plan by reclassifying and remapping a portion of certain real property located at 24500 Rolls Range Road, St. Michael's, Maryland, and further described as Tax Map 23, Parcel 41, from unprogrammed to S1, immediate priority status pursuant to an application filed by Rolls Range Partners LLC.
Again, counsel, Ray Clark, county engineer. The Public Works Advisory Board at their March 20th meeting reviewed the application and presented a motion recommending that the county council adopt Resolution 373 with the following changes. They were asked, I guess, were, says, subject to the terms and conditions herein, the comp water and sewer plan is amended to reclassify and remap. And they just wanted to add the portion, portion into that sentence of the property from unprogrammed to S1. And then they also had another, this is under Section 4, be amended to say, the portion of the property as shown in Exhibit B, which includes an addition of, an addition of 1.935 acres plus or minus from what was approved in Resolution 282, was the recommendation of the Public Works Advisory Board, that be added to the Sections 2 and 4. And the board basically approved that motion via a four-to-zero vote.
Okay.
This is Elisa DeFlo, Planning and Zoning, and the Planning Commission found the, made a motion to make it consistent with the 2016 Comprehensive Plan.
Okay. All right. Okay, at this time, I'll go ahead and open to the public hearing. Once again, like I said, if you're an individual, come up for three minutes. And if you're representing an organization, I'll let you have five. So at this time, anybody want to come up and talk about 330, 373? 373, you're welcome to come up. Okay. At this time, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing on 373. Any other questions from council or discussions? Are you, Pete, any discussion on 373?
We lost connection with Mr. Lusher.
I did.
Can you try to plug it in again?
Yeah. We lost it.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes, sir. Yep. Pete, we, yeah.
I have an amendment, as recommended by the Public Works Advisory Board, to clarify the description of the property. And I believe, I believe the clerk has that amendment that could be read in to the record.
Is this different than what?
Yeah. He's on, he's on another one. Pete, we're still on.
Pete, we're still on 373. So if we're on 370?
I'm sorry.
Okay. Is that, is that three? Are you on three? Which one are you on?
No, no, 373. I, I, I got you.
Okay. You good? Okay. All right. Okay, so Madam Secretary, call the vote.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes? Aye.
Okay. All right. Next resolution is 375. Madam Secretary, if you could read that, that'd be great.
Resolution Number 375, a resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Border and Sewer Plan by reclassifying and remapping certain real property located at 26396 St. Michael's Road, Easton, Maryland, and further described as Tax Map 33, Parcel 30, from unprogrammed to S1, immediate priority status pursuant to an application filed by 2500 St. Michael's Holdings LLC.
Counsel, Ray Clark, county engineer. The Public Works Advisory Board met on May 20th on this, on Resolution 375. They ultimately made a recommendation that the property owner was willing, requested the property owner was willing to limit development rights on the property to one EDU and give up any subdivision rights for the property. Mr. Dorman, the property owner, agreed. And ultimately, the board voted five to zero in recommending the Resolution 375 be adopted by the county council, I believe, with that change, so.
Counsel, thank you. Bryce Yelton, Talbot County Planning and Zoning. In staff's review of this application, it was made apparent to us that in the application, the parcel, and as originally written in the resolution and initially introduced by the council, contained an incorrect size for the acreage of the property. The property in its deed consists of tax map, or, yes, tax parcel 30, deed parcels one and two. This application, in speaking with the Public Works Advisory Board and with the owner, needed to be clarified, is only the northern section of St. Michael's Road, which is deed parcel one of two, is subject to this application. Deed parcel two of two is included in a plat that was referenced on the deed. It's about 29 acres, which is the south of St. Michael's Road, which has its own development rights that are not being changed to an S1 classification and contain their own development rights. The property that is north of St. Michael's Road is only asking for one EDU, and they only have one development right that's in the critical area, since it's 20 acres, and they're currently using that for the house.
Okay.
And so the, knowing all of this, on April 2nd, 2025, the Planning Commission reviewed the resolution. And most, a motion was made by the Planning Commission to recommend the resolution be clarified as follows. And I believe Patrick has prepared this resolution as amended. And with that clarification, the Planning Commission certified Resolution 375 to be consistent with the 2016 Talbot County Comprehensive Code and the seven relevant standards in accordance with the environmental article. And they voted in favor of it, four to zero.
Okay. All right, thank you, guys. Okay. At this time, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing and give anybody three minutes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes, sir.
Would it be relevant before we open it to the public hearing to introduce the amendment?
Yeah. That's fine.
So I would, I would like to introduce that amendment at this time. And again, I believe the clerk has the text.
He does.
Yeah.
The amendment we'd read is follows. A resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Border and Sewer Plan by reclassifying and remapping certain real property located at 26396 St. Michael's Road, Easton, Maryland, and further described as Tax Map 33, Parcel 30, deed parcel one of two, from unprogrammed to S1, immediate priority status pursuant to an application filed by 2500 St. Michael's Holdings LLC. And the paragraph reads, whereas 2500 St. Michael's Holdings LLC, the owner is the owner of certain real property located at 26396 St. Michael's Road, Easton, Maryland, and further described as Tax Map 33, Parcel 30, deed parcel one of two, as shown on a plat recorded among the plat records of Talbot County, Maryland, at LIBOR MAS #81, Folio 497, the property. And whereas, the property consists of, instead of 50.3837 acres, it would read 21.228 plus or minus acres, as improved with a single-family dwelling.
Okay. Ray, is this something, I mean, help us understand what you, what you were saying, you and Bryce, versus what this amendment is? And do we need to take a pause on this? Does that need to go back to?
I think, I think the amendment addresses what the Public Works Advisory Board, I think, was requesting. I think what was, when you look at the map, how we've laid out the map within the exhibit for the S1 area, that's accurate. The problem is, is that there's a parcel next to it that's, that's unprogrammed.
Okay.
It's also listed at 50 acres, a little more or less. And it's not that big. It's basically, you got two deeded parcels. You got, what's it, deed one is one that's coming into the sewer service area, and deed two is not. So deed two is not going to be in the sewer service area.
The reason for doing this is to avoid any misconceptions when you look at the map versus the way that the resolution is written. Currently, the way the resolution is written before amending it is showing the 50-acre parcel, which is how ESTAT delineates the actual overall size of deed parcels one and two. If you were to do that as amended, I believe, and speaking with Patrick last week, that if you do that, you amend both deed parcel one and deed parcel two into the S1 sewer service area, which we do not believe was the intent of this resolution.
Okay.
So doing this clarifies that it is only the northern portion of St. Michael's Road, which is the 21 and change acreage with the current house on it.
This is where the map's correct and the language is wrong.
I'm with you. So, so at this stage, is, and Patrick, you guys are comfortable with us doing it now and not going back to the Planning Commission or Public Works?
Yes, this issue was identified after the Public Works Advisory Board's meeting and the Planning Commission had it. It's not a substantive amendment, it's, it's actually, the property is correctly described, it's just not as specific as it needed to be.
I got you.
And we're actually saying it's less property that's being proposed for reclassification, not more property.
Okay.
I don't think this is a substantive amendment.
Okay, no problem.
It's consistent with what the, both the Planning Commission and Public Works Advisory recommended.
Okay, thank you, guys. So at this, at this time, Madam Secretary, we have to vote on the amendment, correct, first?
We need an introduction of the amendment first.
Okay, all right. What, is that a raise of hands? Yep.
Mr. Lusher?
Mr. Lusher, yes.
You're introducing as well?
Mr. Lusher, you introducing too?
Yes.
Yes.
He didn't see your hand.
I knew you wouldn't say that. Okay. So at this time, we've, we've introduced it, so we, can we, can we, do we need to wait or can we vote?
Public. I would suggest go ahead and vote it so that it's, it's clear to the public if anybody wants to speak, what exactly their.
So you want me to go ahead and open up the public hearing?
I would, I would vote on the amendment first.
Of course, and then reopen, and reopen, okay. Got you. No problem, okay. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Hold on, before I answer that, we're voting to, just to introduce it.
We're just voting on the amendment to the resolution.
Voting to approve the amendment or not.
We'll take the resolution after the public hearing, either as amended or as originally introduced.
Okay, all right, then I.
Yep. Okay.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Okay, so what we'll do now is we'll go ahead and reopen the public hearing on the new amendment, so we'll give you three minutes for individuals to come up, talk about that, or five minutes for organizations, so on Resolution 375, the new amendment, please, please feel free to come up. Okay, okay. All right, at this time, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing on the new amendment of 375. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
I have a question. So the amended version, did the public have a, have availability to see the amended version of this resolution prior to the public hearing?
They did not see the amendment, but the amendment just, the amendment just clarifies the property, the property is accurately described, it's just too much of it being described because there's actually one parcel, but it consists of two deed parcels, so it's just clarifying that only one deed parcel with, that has the house on it is the property that's being sought to be reclassified.
So the amendment's not necessary for the public review prior to the public hearing?
In this instance, no, it's really just clarifying an error in the description.
Okay. Aye.
Okay. All right, next, Madam Secretary, 376.
Resolution number 376, a resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan by reclassifying and remapping certain real property located at 7952 Churchneck Road, St. Michael's, Maryland, and further described as Tax Map 32, Parcel 154, from unprogrammed to S1, immediate priority status pursuant to an application filed by Edmund Fleetwood Dunston and Augusta Harrison Dunston.
Okay.
Thank you, counsel.
Yep.
Again, on March 20th, the Public Works Advisory Board passed a motion recommending the county council adopt Resolution 376 as written.
Okay.
And that was via, I'm sorry, via a five to zero vote, sorry.
Okay.
Counsel, thank you, Bryce Yelton, again, for Talbot County Planning and Zoning. On April 2nd, 2025, the Planning Commission reviewed Resolution 376. A motion was made by the Planning Commission to certify the resolution consistent with the 2016 Talbot County Comprehensive Plan and the seven relevant standards in accordance with the environmental articles of the Maryland Annotated Code. The commission voted four to zero to approve the, the application.
Okay, thank you. Any, okay, so, all right, at this time, I'll open to the public hearing, give you three minutes for individual, five minutes for an organization, so anybody that'd like to come up on 376, yes, sir, come on up.
I'm Edmund Dunston.
I'm Augusta Dunston.
And I don't know if you really need to hear from us or not, but we're the homeowners.
Okay.
And the new sewer line goes under our driveway now and under our mailbox, across our frontage, and we would just love to tap in instead of watch our septic field gradually get wetter and decay with the king tides.
Yes, sir. Yep, that sounds great. I appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Yep, yep. Okay. Okay, anybody else? Any neighbors from them? Any neighbors, you know? Okay.
No neighbors are watching.
Are they watching? Okay, okay, that's good, that's good. So, okay, so at this time, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Any questions from council? Mr. Lusher, any questions?
No, no questions on this, but Mr. Callahan, after we take your, did we call the question on the previous one?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. That was the one you did.
Got it.
Okay, okay. All right, anybody else?
No.
Okay. Madam Secretary, Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next is Resolution 377.
Resolution number 377, a resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan by reclassifying and remapping certain real property located at 3965 Ocean Gateway, Trap, Maryland, and further described as Tax Map 55, Parcel 51, from unprogrammed to S1, immediate priority status pursuant to an application filed by the town of Trap.
Thank you. Counsel, on March 20th, the Public Works Advisory Board reviewed Resolution 377. During their meeting, they requested that another, an additional whereas be added to the resolution and that whereas clause would acknowledge that the property was previously connected due to the mistaken assumption that the property was already mapped S1, based upon adding that, I guess, whereas clause, the board voted via a four in favor and one abstaining vote for that resolution.
Good evening, counsel. Brendan Tarleton, planning director for Talbot County. On April 2nd of this year, Planning Commission reviewed Resolution 377 and found it consistent with the 2016 comprehensive plan and the seven relevant standards in accordance with environmental article nine dash 506. The commission voted on this resolution and it passed via four zero vote.
Okay, great. Okay. All right then, so, okay, at this time, I'll go ahead and open it to the public hearing and give you three minutes, individual, five minutes for, for organization, so anybody that wants to come up and talk about 377, please, please come on up, 377. Okay? Okay, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing on 377. Counsel, Mr. Lusher, anybody have any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Callahan?
Yes, sir.
I have a, a point from the Public Works Advisory Board. I did not have an amendment prepared in advance for this, and I'm going to ask that we, that we defer voting on this until we can prepare that.
Okay, all right, that sounds good. So let's go ahead and delay that. Do we need a motion to do that? Okay, so we'll just go ahead and delay that to next meeting, so that will be April 22nd? Yep, April 22nd, we'll go ahead and vote on that on 377. So, okay. And I just want to, I just want to commend Ray and his team in planning and zoning. I think, you know, I know it's, all this sounds very boring to everybody, but it's very, very important for Talbot County that we're hooking up some of these failing septic systems and giving people the opportunity to do things through the property, so I just wanted to commend you that because that's what we're up here for, to try to help the county grow and be very, the environment for the bay and that, and that whole non-yards, that's what we're up here for, to try to help things. So Ray and Brendan, your team, you guys are doing a good job and I really appreciate that, and the, and the community really appreciates, appreciates that too, okay? All right. Madam Secretary, Bill number 1584 is next.
Bill number 1584, a bill to repeal official zoning map 32 of Talbot County and reenact the same with amendments to the zoning classifications of Tax Map 32, Parcel 36, consisting of 3.737 acres, more or less, from town residential, TR, to general commercial, GC, and of a portion of Tax Map 32, Parcel 91, consisting of 4.6603 acres, more or less, from TR to GC.
Okay.
Thank you, this is Elisa DeFlo, planning and zoning. This was reviewed by the Planning Commission and found to be, then they recommended approval to you to change the maps.
Okay.
We found that it was likely a mistake in the zoning maps that happened, you know, in the last 10 years.
I got you, okay. All right, so I'll go ahead and open that, is that, is that, open that to the public hearing? Okay. I'll open the public hearing on Bill 1584, give you three minutes for individuals, five minutes for organizations, so anybody on 1584 that would like to come up and talk about it, you're welcome to come on up. He come out of nowhere, look at him.
I saw him come in.
Yeah, come out of nowhere, yeah.
Members of the council, thank you very much. Ryan Showalter, appearing on behalf of both of the applicants, as Ms. DeFlo reported, these, these properties for many years were zoned initially C2 and then zoned general commercial, and when the county adopted its zoning map in 2018 for, for unexplained reasons, the critical area portion of these two properties was zoned town residential rather than commercial. The comprehensive plan shows them as commercial in both the future land use map and the St. Michael's area plan. They've always been used commercially and that's why the Planning Commission unanimously found that this meets the standard. For rezoning, you have to find that either there was a change in the neighborhood or a mistake in the existing zoning, and this is clearly zoning that is the basis of inadvertent mistake. So we just request zoning, commercial zoning, general commercial zoning to be consistent with the longstanding land use of these parcels.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to come up? Talk about Bill 1584. Okay. I think we got another couple of weeks for this to go through, or is it eligible?
Yes, two weeks.
Okay, all right, so we'll be, we'll, we'll go ahead and vote on this in a couple of weeks, on April 22nd, on Bill 158.
Just want to follow up question.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
When, when the, when this new zoning designation is applied here, does that mean that also the gateway overlay will apply to the expanded parcel?
Yeah.
Elisa DeFlo, planning and zoning, the gateway overlay didn't change. It still will remain with the parcels.
Okay. Did that answer your question, Mr. Lusher?
So the gateway, the gateway overlay would apply to the whole parcel?
Yes, the frontage, yes.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Any other questions, counsel?
No.
Okay. Okay, so we'll go ahead and vote on that next meeting, which is the 22nd, okay? All right. Next on the agenda is a council discussion with the proposed tax amendments on chapter 190.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes, sir.
I can address this.
Yep.
I was requested by Councilmember Milky to prepare some proposed amendments to the language in the zoning code regarding short-term rentals.
Mm-hmm.
Generally speaking, the, these proposed amendments would create two classes of STR licenses, one for owner-occupied residences and one for non-owner-occupied residences, with there being certain conditions applicable to the latter. It would provide for greater flexibility in the composition of the short-term rental review board. It would give them, the board, greater discretion in considering whether to issue an STR license. Those are, there's other amendments, but that's the general essence of what is being proposed. So procedurally, because this is a zoning text amendment, the council must first decide to refer to the Planning Commission for review and recommendation, and then the Planning Commission will submit their recommendations back to the council, and then the council can decide to introduce a bill.
Okay, all right. So is that a raise of hands or just a sponsor to, to move it forward to the Planning Commission?
I think a motion to refer the proposed amendments to the Planning Commission would be appropriate.
Okay.
I move to refer to the Planning Commission. I think it's time that this be reviewed and updated and that's basically what it's about.
Okay. Is there a second?
I second.
Okay, we got a motion and second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right, next on the agenda, Mr. Stamp, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Counsel President. Counsel, under the county manager report tonight, I have a number of items, but first, counsel, I would like to request your consideration to declare Tuesday, April 15th, 2025, as a special legislative day for the introduction of the FY 2526 budget and appropriation ordinance.
Okay.
Need a motion for that?
Yep.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Thank you, counsel. Next item I have, I have Ms. Marilyn Neal here, the executive director of the Neighborhood Service Center. She is here this evening to request counsel's consideration to assist them with a critical funding challenge that they are currently facing. Marilyn? And while she comes up, just as a secondary point, also we have Ms. Nancy Andrew here as well. You know Nancy, she serves as the director of the Talbot Family Network and is also a department head with county government, and she has already had, took the opportunity from this role to pull together a, a gathering of nonprofits to discuss challenges that nonprofits are having, moving forward with reduced funding available, yet the need is still great, and she, she's initiated an initial meeting, meeting with nonprofits, and she's here, she can answer any questions or add input.
Okay, that's great.
Marilyn?
I would like to thank the council for seeing me once again, and I would also like to thank some support we have from Linda Webb, Department of Social Services, Mr. Corey Pack, Responsible Fathers, James Carter, Character Counts, and my board members that are here in support of NSC and, and gratitude of what the council does for the Neighborhood Service Center. Just to give a little more information, Neighborhood Service Center is a, is a community action agency, and our mission is to serve the most vulnerable residents in our county. Community action agencies were founded in 1960 when President Lyndon Burt Johnson acted, enacted the war on poverty. The goal was to empower local communities and address poverty and, and inequality, and our agency was designated a community action agency by the late Mr. Herbert Andrews. These agencies focus on the root cause of poverty through various programs and services such as financial assistance, job training, housing support, and health programs. NSC has been in existence for over 50 years, providing essential services to thousands of households. In the past five years, we've served more than 9,006 households in Talbot County. We help families navigate challenges such as homelessness, food, insecurities, and other emergency service needs. We are seeking funding in the amount of $150,000 to ensure that NSC can continue operating through this fiscal year. We will face staff layoffs and possibility be forced to close, which will leave the county individual, which will leave countless individuals and families without critical services. Our funding has been significantly impacted, and we are at a crossword in maintaining our current operations. Second to Talbot County, we receive funding from community service block grant, which supports operational costs and services to the community. An additional funding comes from private donors, our annual field, special grants, and most of our funding, fundings go back out the door in client benefits. These funds are distributed based on specific program requirements and need-based criteria. All client services are based on income, with the exception of our Rapid Read Housing Program, and that program is set up to with the exception of our Rapid Read Housing Program. And that program is set up to move homeless individuals into permanent housing. We serve families experiencing financial hardship, housing instability, and a need for emergency assistance. NSC serves 1,400 households annually. Without our services, families would face increased hardships, including loss of housing, food insecurity, and and that is something that none of us in the county would like to see happen. Our absence would significantly strain our community resources, leaving many people without support they need. In addition, we received fun, we received a call today in regards to our CSBG funding. We were told it would be released in three to four weeks. Well, that would be a disaster for the Neighborhood Service Center because three or four weeks is too, is just too long. And you may wonder why we don't have a rainy day fund? Well, in fact, we did have a rainy day fund. But that fund was used to sustain the clients in the community that need our assistance. And they are the most vulnerable population. And I just want to share that we find ourselves in this, in this position because we trusted our fully executed grants to be paid. And today, it has not, they have not been paid. All the funding coming into the Neighborhood Service Center is reimbursable funding. So our rainy day fund solidifies every need until those funds come. And, and when they don't come back, we find ourselves where we are today. To remain operational, we have already made several cuts to our budget, including reduced staff, put repairs on hold to our severely aging building. But those actions allowed us to keep the doors open. We are asking your support to help us through this fiscal year. While it is not a long-term solution, it will provide us with time needed to brainstorm alternatives and strategies in our service to secure, to, to secure funding that will allow us to provide the services most needed in our county. I have reached out to various towns, Easton, Oxford, St. Michael's, to ask if they would assist Neighborhood Service Center in taking care of their residents as well. I also asked the town of Easton for a presentation, such as I'm presenting to you all tonight, since they are the largest town and the largest amount of our clients are found here in Easton, Maryland. We have also placed a freeze on our salaries. So in closing, NSC has been an integral part of our community for many years. We've helped thousands of families overcome adversity and achieve self-sufficiency. We need your help and support to continue doing this work. Without your help, we face a real possibility of closing our doors. But I do thank you from the bottom of my heart for everything that you have done thus far for the Neighborhood Service Center.
Thank you, Milkie. Okay, council. Okay. We'll start off with questions?
Sure.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you, Marilyn, for coming in and presenting this to us. We certainly, you know, know that the federal government has made it a challenge for a lot of our local nonprofits and agencies that help the community. I just want to ask, do you have, prior to this, the loss of the federal funding, do you have a sustainability plan for the Neighborhood Service Center as it relates to most nonprofits has a savings or something in savings that's up, that allows them to keep the business moving in the event that they lose funding for at least a year?
So to answer that question, we would, as I stated, those funds are used to keep the community home. When they're needed, unlike most nonprofits, we can't just bank ours. It goes back out the door to the community. That's, that's the difference between the Neighborhood Service Center and other nonprofits. We're in the business of sustaining families. And with that, we, it's, it's almost inevitable to, to have that.
Understood, but isn't there a standard for nonprofits to potentially, as a security, hold the, you know, have a certain amount in savings, like your accountant doesn't recommend that? Just because as a, you know, when you have a nonprofit to prepare in case something happens and you need to close your doors, not saying we don't believe you're going to close your doors, but to have that as a backup to sustain you for about a year.
Yes, but to answer that question honestly, if we don't serve the population, the vulnerable population of Talbot County, we don't need our doors open. Because that's what we are here to do, is, is to take care of the community. That's what community action does. And that's why we are the only nonprofit written into Congress, into legislation. And that is why the cuts in funding are so detrimental to not just the Neighborhood Service Center, but all the community action agencies across the United States.
So does this just affect the Emergency Assistance Program that you have or other programs too?
It affects every program that we have because that is what community action is. It's written into Congress that we are supposed to provide these services. And that issue is at hand now that we can't because the funding hasn't been released to us by the federal government.
So there's four, is there, help me understand.
Sure.
The letter, it says four different areas. So the Emergency Assistance Program, Workforce Development, Education and Skill Building, and Health and Wellness Programs. So all of those programs are in jeopardy because of the lack of the federal funding?
Yes, because the Neighborhood Service Center is in jeopardy because of the lack of funding. Unfortunately, it's a, it's a integrated-
Altogether?
Altogether.
Okay.
Yes.
So they all work, those, all of those programs work in unison together, basically?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
And what is your specific request of the county, excuse me?
It's $150,000 and that is funding that I have already spent expecting to get reimbursed for, like we always do. And I haven't gotten it. And so therefore, I'm here.
Okay. Now, you said that you've made requests of other municipalities.
I have not received a response yet.
Okay, but are you requesting this amount from them or?
I requested $33,000 from them, which would total almost what I'm asking of the county.
Could you explain that? I don't, I don't follow that.
So I requested $33,000 from each one of those municipalities.
Okay, but 150 from the county?
Yes.
And how is that number determined?
Because it is the number that I need to be able to continue services. And unfortunately, the only ones I can depend on to take care of the vulnerable population in Talbot County thus far has been you all. And I'm so sorry to say that, but it's true.
What percentage of the population that you take care of are actually residents of Easton?
All of them. All of them, except for the ones that are of Easton, not the county. You're asking for the town.
Town.
It's about 52%.
And so you're not asking for the town to contribute their fair share?
I'm asking for them to contribute. I went to the town when we were facing energy deficits late last year. And I wasn't able to solidify any funding from the town. So.
Now, isn't it true that Megan Cook, the mayor, is on your board?
Yes, that's correct.
And she doesn't have a conflict in determining these issues?
Well, our board, because it is a community action agency and it's a tripartite board, it has to be made up of an equal amount of public officials, private businesses, and the low-income population. So because of the way it's written into Congress, I don't believe it's a conflict.
I hope it's not because I'm the chair.
Oh, I thought you were just-
You're not the mayor.
You're not the mayor.
But I'm the president.
No, to answer you, Ms. Martin, it's not a conflict because of the way the structure is written into Congress.
And do you have an actual legal opinion on that?
It's written into Congress. It's, it's a federal statute.
She said it's written in the Congress, statute. Okay, Mr. Step?
I think I've heard what I needed to hear. Thank you.
Yep, yep. Mr. Lusher?
Yeah, I, you know, clearly, clearly this is, this is a situation not of Neighborhood Service Center owed and making. And this is, this is a vital service for our community. I think it's, I think it's appropriate for, for support from the county.
Okay. Okay, that's good. So first of all, Marilyn, I really appreciate you and Kathy being here, that's sure, and, and the committee being here, and, and really the community supporting this. It's been a learning curve for me, being on there for the last six months or so. I've got the past president, Mr. Pack, back here. He's, he's the expert in this stuff, you know what I mean? So, but at the end of the day, I've learned a lot. We've had many meetings. I really appreciate all that you're doing to try to get it to a point where we're above water here. You have, if I'm, if I'm not correct, please correct me, that we, we did have roughly 14, 15 employees and now we're down to eight or nine, you said. So, you know, we're, we're scaling back. We had a meeting the other night with, with Mr. Stamp. He was there. So, so we have a lot of strategic things, I think, by helping you with this money. I think we also need a, a plan for the future on, on how we stabilize the Neighborhood Service Center. And, you know, Nancy in the background here has, she, she takes care of, I'm losing my thought here.
Talbot Family Network?
Yeah, Talbot Family Network, thank you. And, and I, and I sort of feel, and me and Clay were talking about it and we've talked about it, we've talked to Nancy, I think there might be some possibilities of us working together. I don't know the ifs, ands, or buts about it, but she runs, she, she runs that part of the county's business and I think it could help you. I mean, you've got mandates, you've got stuff like that. I think we could learn from her experience. I think we could help you. But we need to get on good ground on this. I, I'm hoping that Easton, sort of, you know, Megan and their council, when they're in front of, you know, when you go present what you have, and, you know, 95% of the people are in Easton here, you know, I, I, I think there's room to, to partner with them and I hope they do. When, when you were, when you were talking about, when Mrs. Milkie was asking the question about asking municipalities, so I'm just asking a question too. So it would be Oxford, St. Michael's, Trap, Easton? Were you asking all those for $33,000?
I am, I just haven't, those are the only ones that have went out the door so far.
I, I got you.
But yes, sir, I am.
Yeah, so, so, go, go ahead.
No, I'm, I want to make a correction with the staff.
Okay.
For the record.
No problem.
We were at 18, we're at 13.
Okay, all right, that's, that's fine. Thank you. I, I wasn't quite sure what that number was, but it, my point is, she's scaling down, okay? The, the other point I'm trying to make, do you see, if we're asking the other towns, do you want 150 overall or do you want 150 plus another 150, it sounds like?
That's correct.
Okay.
And that is because the funding that we get through our CSBG grant is a little over 302,000.
Okay, I got you. I understand that. Okay, that's good. So hopefully, hearing what we're hearing from you guys is that we, the other counties or the other municipalities will, will, will pitch in and try to assist you. And when you get, when you, when you get some of this money back, okay, so the money that we're giving you is, is, is that we're going to think about giving you, so to speak, that's money that we're giving you and it's not coming back, with the stuff that you got come in. So this is asking for, not a loan, this is asking for, to commit to the 150,000.
So, Mr. Callahan, can I interject? I have Mr. Pack back there.
Yes, sir. Yeah.
So the funds is coming back to the county, if the county were to give it?
Well, I was just taking, uh, a mini interrupt.
Yeah, sure, come on up, Mr. Pack, please.
But if, if it may sue your, your content, I mean, I mean, you've loaned money to the department before.
Right.
And got money back, you loaned money to the airport, of course.
Right.
And it could be possible that they tell you all, if you loaned the money and then got the money back once the, the CBD money came back.
That, that's why I was asking the question.
Okay.
That, that's exactly why I was asking the question. Could you, um, could you operate still in a, in a good way if you got paid where, on your end, and paid us back?
So I'll cooperate on a good end if, if I pay you back, if I get the full funding.
Okay.
Because that hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars that I'm seeking tonight has already been paid.
Okay.
It has not been reimbursed to me.
Okay.
And from what I understand, um, first and second quarter funding, if we get it, we've been told before it was the only way we had of getting it. I don't know what happens to third and fourth quarter funding.
I see.
And if I was allowed to keep you, keep the funding, if you are able to fund that hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, it would give us time, and I say us, I'm saying the agency, to look at ways to sustain. I'm, I don't know what the outcome would be. Hopefully, we wouldn't have to sell problems.
Right.
But our mission is to take care of the low-income population, the Neighborhood Service Center's mission. So if it came to where the board would need to sit down and look at liquidating, I don't know the outcome, I just know that if the Neighborhood Service Center isn't here and isn't viable, it is a big disservice to the community.
Yes, ma'am, okay. Mr. Stamp, you want to say a few words?
Well, I think, uh, this is an interesting conversation. I think this is, uh, this begs for a short-term, long-term approach. I think the long-term approach is we have an opportunity to pull all nonprofits together that are struggling these days. You know, we, we, uh, we saw an incredible flex up during the COVID period, and that flex hadn't come down, except the money's coming down. So the need is there and the money's not there, and all of our nonprofits are struggling right now. So we have a capacity to address the long-term by pulling one of our department heads to facilitate, um, you know, forums with nonprofits to see where you could potentially standardize pro- standardized processes and, and what have you. So I think, long-term, there's some opportunities that are there. Uh, I think with regard to the Neighborhood Service Center, uh, my view is a flexed up during COVID, money was flowing through grants, and, uh, the money's tightening down now, but the need is not tightening down, and they've run everything on a shoestring. They had a reserve fund that they used, so they, they had a reserve fund that they expended because of need. They're trying to flex the organization down, they've laid off employees, they've reduced working hours, and they're amenable to do whatever's necessary to try to keep services going. Um, it would be nice if, you know, other jurisdictions, municipalities would pitch in as well, and I know they're reaching out to everybody. And they're very fortunate in Talbot County that the Talbot County government has always tried to support their mission.
Right.
And so, you know, from my, my lens, you know, I think that there's an immediate need here, whether council decides to give them a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to get them out of this situation, I would, I would tag on to that, that that be used to, to right the ship, if you will, and then whatever's left, and hopefully, whatever's left be directed toward a contingency, a rainy day fund, whatever the, the, the criteria that Keisha was talking about, that, that money go into that contingency.
Right.
Or if council's decision is to do a loan, uh, we have the capability through our finance office to do loans as well. Uh, but that's just my viewpoint.
Okay, okay.
Another question.
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
You indicated that some of your funding comes from private sources. What actions are you taking to solicit donations from those private sources, um, and, and maybe organi- maybe not, other nonprofit organizations to supplement?
I have written letters to foundations that we get money from normally during our, through our annual appeal. And we've also contacted businesses, businesses that have never donated to the Neighborhood Service Center.
When was all this done?
When was it done? When did we send those letters?
It was in, um, December when we did the annual appeal.
No, we did it since then.
And then we did an additional one end of February.
And email, I have emails from our large donors, and I emailed them, and we've been reaching those since December.
Okay.
And fast as the money comes in, somebody comes in and they're getting evicted, properties are being, um, condemned, and it goes right back out the door.
Okay, um, Mr. Lasher, you have any, any comments?
Uh, just that, uh, as I said earlier.
Yeah.
I think that, uh, I think it's time for us to, uh,
Okay.
To lend a helping hand to this, uh, this vital organization.
Okay. And, and I, I would agree with that. The, the other thing that I'm, I'm hoping, okay, is, is, is really, now that, I hope, Connor, you do a nice article in the paper, because we're, we do, we do need a lot of help on your end, that, um, the community and the Neighborhood Service Center is asking for help, okay? And that's what we're here for, and hopefully, the community, municipalities, um, can, can help with this, you know? And I, and I don't mean to throw people, you know, um, in, 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 put them in a corner and say, hey, we need your money, but this is a, a community outcry, so to speak, that, that we, we need, that we need help for people that, um, are not privileged to, to, um, go to work, they need a house, they need housing, they need, you know, I learned a lot from you, Marilyn, when it come to, um, food and, and, um, getting, um, a hotel. I mean, we spend, you, you in the community spend thousands of dollars trying to house people for a couple of weeks, find them a job. Not only that, is you, um, I seen a school bus pull up, and you personally get the little child off the bus and bring him in, and the mother's working, and, and you are sitting there with the child, you know, um, so the mother can work and then comes pick the kid up. So, you know, I, I sort of have a passion for what you do and, 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 and your employees and stuff, so I really feel like you're doing everything you can, um, and, and it is, it is sad, it, it's, it's sad that we're at this point, um, but that's what we're here for, we're here to help, and I, and I'm hoping that, um, um, Easton, you know, helps us too, you know? Um, and, and that's a little bit of the key, and like, like I said, you know, Mr. Pack's been up here many times and been, been involved with Neighborhood Service Center for fifteen years or longer, and, and, and you've never come here and asked us for that, for anything like this. We've always tried to support you, and we are where we're at right now. So I think it's really important at this stage to try to help the community and do the best you can, um, in the next six months. I think you need to get with some of the directors, I think you need to get with Nancy, I think Mr. Pack, I think, um, Keisha can help. Um, you've got great people around you, um, that can maybe help you and, and pull this off, and we have surplus in years to come for you.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Yep, and I really appreciate you guys doing everything you can, and also, I appreciate all of the committee members being here, supporting her. You know, we've, we've talked, um, several meetings that we, we do need more support, we need more people on the committee. Um, I think we have twelve or thirteen, don't we? So we need a little bit more involvement, because this is tough. It's tough, um, to do this, this job that you do, so, um... I, uh, I'm past my ten minutes, I think. Exactly.
Does council want to take action on the request?
I do, yep. So I'd like to make a motion that, um, we, um, give the Neighborhood Service Center a hundred-and-fifty-thousand. Okay, we got a motion second. Discussion? Do you feel, do you guys feel better doing a loan?
I don't know, I wasn't prepared to vote tonight.
You weren't?
I was not.
Okay.
A lot of information just thrown at us.
Okay, so what we'll do is, is, how about if we, can we do this on the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll go ahead and hold off, Marilyn, we'll go ahead and take care of you, can you hold off a couple more weeks?
I, I don't have a choice, but can we hold off for a couple more weeks?
We'll tighten up, we'll try to hold off.
Okay, okay. So...
Mr. Callahan?
Yes, sir.
Could we, if, if, if the council's not, uh, comfortable with the full amount for right now, we know that this is, they're, they're already, they're already reducing staff hours, uh, can we do a smaller amount if we're, if we're holding off on the big, on the larger decision? Can we move for, pick a number, uh, that would, uh, not necessarily be the, the, turn it over to the rest of this whole year, but, uh, but for the next couple of weeks?
Okay, let me, let me ask council, are you, are you comfortable with giving them a, a smaller loan for the next couple of weeks?
Well, I'd like to know what the town of Easton is going to do.
Right, and the other municipalities.
Well, I, I, unfortunately...
I mean, at least the town.
Yeah, at least the town.
If we could get some type of direction as to the town.
Have you got a date to go before them, Marilyn? Have they responded at all?
No, I didn't.
I mean, I, I, I would just rather discuss it with our, um, finance and really get some parameters around it and determine whether...
Well, I do, I do know, I do know in our budget of, of twenty-six, we, we budget at thirty-three thousand. So that, that was a, that was for next budget, so can, can we, can...
We could do anything council would like to do. I mean, there are, there are contingency dollars available, it's just a matter of what council wants, whether they want to do a line of credit as in a loan, if you want to do increments, we can do increments. Um, I don't know their situation, I mean, can you wait two weeks?
Mr. Pack, do you mind coming up?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I, I do appreciate my piece of remark for it, running away from the town, but I have to remember, Neighborhood Service Center is your, is your community anti-poverty agency. It's written into a document that's, uh, it's a county document, so as much as they're housed in the town of Easton and they serve every citizen of Talbot County, only in Talbot County is it written that the Neighborhood Service Center is your anti-poverty agency. They just word it that way. They house in the town of Easton, yes, they operate in the town of Easton, yes, over fifty percent of the citizens that they serve are, are county of Easton citizens, yes, that's all true. But there are, this is your anti-poverty agency. Waiting for another jurisdiction to tell you what they're going to do, but this is your agency, I don't see where that matters, she might be...
Well, let me just say this. Me personally, I'm not aware that they're our agency, so this is the first time that I'm hearing that they are our agency as it relates to Talbot County. So therefore, I need to see those documents stating that they are our agency. And then with that, I certainly would be willing to make a quicker determination. I wasn't saying wait for the town of Easton before we made a decision, but I would like to know if the town of Easton would be contributing to the Neighborhood Service Center as well. But since Mr. Pack, um, unequivocally said that they're our agency, I'd like to see documents to that effect, please, from Mr. Clay Stamp or Patrick, so that we can unequivocally know that they are our agency, therefore, if they're our agency, we need to be giving them more money, how about that?
Okay.
Just need the facts.
So, just give me the facts and I can deal with that, but I need more information before I can make a decision, because that's information that I certainly, um, did not have, because I've been asking, well, I know what a community, Community Action Committee is, I know, or a Community Action Agency, but if they're Talbot County Council's agency, then I need to know that, and I'd like to have those documents to that effect.
Okay. So what we'll do, any other questions from council? What, what's your thoughts, Mr. Stamp?
I mean, in, in, I, I, I'd like to see if we couldn't do something in the interim. I, I do like kind of the, uh, the idea to, of, of at least getting something to help bridge, uh, you know, just kind of help bridge the gap here.
Meaning for, for a couple of weeks?
Yeah, just so, again, so obviously, as other council members, they have some questions here that they'd like answered, but, uh, in, in the meantime, I, you know, if we can do something, I would, uh, I'd prefer that we do that, just to make sure that we don't run into a situation where folks who are in need here, uh, aren't able to get the, the services that they need. So kind of to the, to the tune of what Mr. Lasher said, so, um, could, could we, uh, could we, could we go for fifty thousand i- in the interim while we're waiting, uh, and then, uh, you seek, uh, seek the additional funding, uh, come at the next meeting? Anybody be able to that?
Is that going to help? Is that going to help you?
Oh, it's going to help.
Fifty thousand?
For two weeks, yes, yes.
So I'll, I'll make, I'll make that a motion that we, uh, that we do, that we do fifty thousand, just in the meantime, while, while, uh, other council members are waiting the, uh, you know, that their questions to be answered, so I'll, I'll make, I'll make that motion.
Okay. Okay, we got a motion second to go ahead and provide, um, fifty thousand at this, at this time. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Okay, aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lasher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Haye?
Aye.
And we have funding in the budget to do so, right? Yes, we do. You're adequate contingency funds in place.
Aye.
Okay. And, and, um, I fully understand what you're saying, Keisha and, and Lynn, so let's try to get you on board next meeting, find out, um, you know, what information you want.
Just to clarify, it's not to get me on board, I'm very aware of the services that the Neighborhood Service Center provides and how important it is to the community, fully understand that. The facts that I want to see is, like Mr. Pack said, if it is indeed our agency, then we need to support it as such, that's it. I mean, it's not a matter of being on board, I'm fully on board, um, but...
But we do give, we do give a, a lot to them.
Right, but I just want to see the documentation to what, um, he stated, because I don't have that information, and this is the first time I'm hearing that, so if that's relevant to the discussion, we need that information, and I appreciate him bringing that, you know, bringing that up.
No problem, okay. All right. Any, any other questions? Thank, thank, I want to thank everybody, okay? Mr. Pack, I appreciate you clarifying some stuff.
Thank you for all you do.
I appreciate everything you're doing too, okay?
Thank you.
And, and Connor, before I leave, don't screw this up. Please don't screw this up, okay?
Have him call you.
Let's, let's put Connor on the spot, can you, can you, can you put something out in your article that says, uh, you know, where, where folks, if they want to help and give, where they can, uh, where they can do that, I got your commitment on that one?
I can do my best, yes.
Okay, that's good.
All right, that's not a no.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, guys, thank you, all right.
It happens all the time.
I understand, I understand. Okay, all right, Mr... Okay.
Let her, let her have a drink.
She, she had a drink, she had a drink.
Of water.
Okay.
You good?
Okay. Okay, Mr. Stamp?
Yes, thank you, council.
Yeah.
I have a few more items for you this evening.
Okay.
Uh, the first item I have is, uh, we have a request from Cassandra Van Hoosier, your Director of Economic Development and Tourism, I'm not sure if she's still with us, so I will carry her request. She's asking for a letter of support of the grant application for the Chesapeake Cap...
Motion to approve. Motion to approve, let's roll this.
Okay, yeah, she's, she's requesting a letter of support for a grant application navigating Chesapeake Country Heritage and Tourism Project, Talbot would, Talbot County would contribute twenty-five-hundred dollars in matching funds, you have this information in your packet.
Motion to approve the support letter with the funds of twenty-five-hundred dollars.
I'll second that. Okay, we got a motion second, Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lasher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Haye?
Aye.
The next item, on behalf of Brian Moore, your Road Superintendent, he is requesting council approval to issue a purchase order to American Paving Fabrics Incorporated in the amount of two-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand dollars for tar and chip surfacing on non-primary county roads. County will be piggybacking on a contract from Somerset County, Maryland. The Roads Department has sufficient funds in their budget for this request.
Motion to approve the request.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second, Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lasher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Haye?
Aye.
Next is Recommendation Award Bid Number 2504 Grass Cutting Services, Parks and Recreation, uh, their, their parks, ballfields, and landings. Um, they are requesting approval to award bid number 2504 to Low bidder Marshall Professional Property Management, LLC, in the amount of eighty-nine thousand, five-hundred dollars. A total of five bids were received.
So moved.
Yep, second. Award bid number two-five-zero-four.
Okay, we got a motion second, Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Bless you, Diane, and yes.
I, I keep asking Jessica, oh, I actually like kick Pete off of the phone. I'm the one...
Shame on you, shame on you.
I know, I know, my foot keeps hitting the... One second, council.
Oh, no.
Okay.
All right, that's funny, tell us how you really feel, Clay.
Okay. And we're on the air, aren't we? Okay. Sorry, Pete.
Is he there?
Pete.
Hey, Pete?
Yes.
Sorry, I disconnected you, I'll tell you all about it later.
So Pete, we're, we're voting on the, uh, uh, twenty-five-zero-four bid for, uh, grass cutting at, uh, parks, uh, and landings. I just voted aye, you're next.
Uh, an aye for me.
Thank you.
Ms. Milkie?
A two's for me, no, yes, I vote.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, council. The next item I have is recommending, um, so I should have Ray come up for this. Ray's going to recommend, uh, your award change order number one, bid twenty-three-zero-nine Goldsboro Neck and Glebe Road Culver Replacement. Uh, I'll fill in anything he may leave out, and, uh, go ahead, Ray.
Thank you. Council, um, to get this, uh, we, to, I guess, kind of give you a summary, uh, we received a grant from the, uh, econo- rural development, economic development fund for seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, we've received one extension. We actually have to have this project done by December, so we're working as quickly as we can to get that done. Uh, we had, we supp- applied for our permits, our environmental permits, um, at this point in time, we've gotten the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers permit, however, we have not gotten MBE's permit, and because of the delays we were having, uh, I basically met with David A. Bramble towards the end of the year and asked him if, you know, to get, if we can work with them, uh, to review the plans, and then ultimately do kind of like a design-build team, uh, with Davis-Bow and Fidel, so that we can get them started and lock in those seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for the grant funding. David A. Bramble has come back with a, um, a change order... David A. Bramble has come back with a, um, a change order request, uh, and this is not only to do just Gold, uh, Goldsboro Neck, but also do the Villa Road improvements that have also been requested by the Rose Department. And so ultimately, David A. Bramble has submitted a, uh, an amount of one million, one-hundred-and-eight thousand and five-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars, uh, based upon our preliminary plans. And I'm just noting that, you know, if we can basically add another hundred and fifty thousand dollars to that because they are preliminary plans, and I don't know what MDE could require us to do in addition, uh, to the permit, to get our permit. So that's basically why I'm coming before the county council and asking for another hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a total of one million, two-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand, five-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars. This would actually be taken out of the, um, grant fund that we've received of seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars for, from the Rural, um, Rural Maryland Economic Development Fund. The first seventy-five, seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars would be paid to this project. The remaining would come out of the Goldsboro Neck Capital Project, where we have five-point-three million dollars. Uh, but that would be, let's say roughly about four million dollars in that project right now.
So council, this is a CIP project. This will, this will take the, uh, Goldsboro Neck and, and finish the widening from Glebe Road through the Culver, on down to, just past Villa Road. Um, and, uh, we have worked with Martha, um, and they have reviewed it. And, uh, they also confirmed that all funding is in place as requested.
Okay. So moved.
Second.
We've got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Haye?
Aye.
And finally, council, I will have Martha come up for fourth quarter budget transfers for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
I haven't seen you for a whole week.
[laughing]
Martha Sparks, Finance Director for Talbot County. In accordance with Section six fifteen, the Talbot County Charter, which states transfers between agencies of the county government and within the same fund of the current expense budget may be made only during the last quarter of the fiscal year and only on the recommendation of the county manager, uh, with the approval of council. So, uh, what I've sent to you are, is a list of fourth quarter transfers. And these, uh, fourth quarter transfers focus on the purchase of capital outlay items. These are capital outlay items that were requested as part of the FY twenty-six budget. And they were determined that they could be purchased with FY twenty-five appropriations. These are all items that were approved by council during our budget work sessions. Um, so I have included them. Uh, the approval of this request will ensure that departments can order and receive these capital outlay items by June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. Also included in this transfer are previously approved, uh, uses of contingency reserves that council, um, has, uh, provided, I'm sorry, it's been a long mic. Um, has previously provided approval for.
Okay.
Council, any questions?
Okay. Any questions on the, uh, transfers, council?
Not from here. I think we've discussed them all quite thoroughly. So, uh, I'll make a motion that we, uh, approve as, uh, as, uh, as stated here.
Hey, Pete, do you have any questions?
No questions for me.
Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Haye?
Aye.
Counsel, that completes your county manager report. Thank you.
Okay, good job.
Thank you.
Stamp, good job. Okay, next would, um, on the agenda is a public comment. Do you have any, uh?
Just Ms. Cardoo.
It's, it's, that's it. That's, that's it too over there.
Come on, the honor.
All right, all right. We, we have none. Okay, council comment. Mr. Step?
Good here.
Okay, um, coun, council comment. Mr. Lusher?
None for me, thank you.
Okay. Lynn?
Um, just briefly.
Okay.
You may recall that we made a request, um, or received a request from the Talbot County Health Department where they indicated there was going to be a cut in their funding. And they were concerned about, and they wanted us to write a letter
Mm-hmm.
to the, to the state not to cut the funds, which we did. And we found out today that the legislature, the legis, legislature voted against any cuts um, to the senior care program. So victory.
Nice.
Thank you.
That's good.
That is wonderful.
That's good.
Um, just a brief comment. Um, just want to let the public know that, um, Ms. Milky and I will be working on a future draft of a, a PFO for discussion in the future. So we're gonna get started working on that. Just want the public to know that we'll be working on that together.
And you want to explain to people what that is?
Adequate public facility ordinance.
Yep.
So, you know, we'll have more discussions about it once we get a draft, and we'll be working with, um, planning and zoning as well.
Right, that's right.
Okay, yep, yep.
Fun stuff.
Okay, the only thing that I have, it's, we, we've got a big weekend, um, for Keisha. And, oh, yeah, yeah, she's got her big run. She's got a half marathon this weekend.
Yeah.
We want to miss her, wish her luck.
Called Delaware, tell them I won one. Watch out.
So, no, we're proud of you. And, um, I know you've been working hard for three or four months, so you good, good luck.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay. Mr. Step, you want to go ahead and, uh?
Absolutely. So the county council's next meeting will be held on Tuesday, April fifteenth, beginning at five P.M., which has been declared a special legislative day. The council will be convening an open session at four P.M. and then adjourning into closed session as listed on the statement for closing that meeting. Therefore, is, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting and reconvene as noted?
So moved.
Okay. We got a motion second to adjourn, Madam Secretary.
We don't have a second.
Oh, we didn't have a second.
All right, now we got one.
Okay. Um, Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Haye?
Aye.
Okay, thanks a lot. Appreciate it. Good job.